And good morning and welcome to the skinny for Friday, June 21st. I'm Mitch Perry, senior political reporter for the Florida Phoenix, joined by Ray Rowa, editor in chief of Tampa Bay's alt weekly creative loafing. Good morning, Ray.
Good morning, Mitch. Thanks for, uh, it's good to be back here.
Yeah, well, you were here last week.
And it's a beautiful day outside. It's supposed to be like the heat of summer and it feels really nice.
It is like the first day of summer, correct?
It was yesterday, it's summer solstice today.
All right. Also, our Ben Montgomery, our third partner here, not here with us today. We miss Ben. And speaking of Ben, by the way, let's talk, we're going to talk about later in the show, we're going to talk about, there's this nine days, I think, left in the month, right? And as of this morning, there were 42 bills still on Governor Ron DeSantis's desk to sign. And we're going to look at some of those and kind of some breaking news, actually, before we get to our guest here on the studio, and that is that one of the biggest bills was the bill to give compensation to the victims of the Dozier School for Boys, $20 million is one of the huge, really kind of feel-good bills of the year, if you will. Senator Darryl Rasan sponsored that in the Senate. He'd been working on that for years. And I just reached out to Senator Rasan a few minutes ago to say, like, is there going to be a bill signing ceremony for this next week? And he just text me and said the governor designed it, so without any fanfare. So we'll get into some of that later in the show. But first, we've got in studio here Hillsborough County Commissioner Harry Cohen. Harry, good morning.
Good morning. Good to be with you.
Great to have you here with us. Harry Cohen's been in public office since 2011. He was elected to Tampa City Council, then reelected in 2015. In 2019, when he was terminated out, he ran for Tampa Mayor, a race in which Jane Castor won, of course. But Harry came back the next year, ran and won a seat on the Hillsborough County Commission, and then had to run again in 2022. So you're not up for reelection this year, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so we don't have to talk about election stuff, at least with you, right now.
Well, we can talk about other people's elections.
And we will, absolutely. So it's so good to have you here, Harry. Again, welcome to Skinny here on WMNF. So a lot to talk about. One of the things I thought, let's just bring this up here, it relates to Tampa Ebor City area. I know there is this proposed, and maybe you guys voted on this, a land swap, which would result in the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office moving from their eight-acre Ebor City headquarters to another site in Brandon. Developer Darryl Shaw, I believe he's, has under contract to acquire that property. So what's, what's going on with that?
So there's a mechanism under state law where people can make unsolicited proposals to the county. And in this particular case, Mr. Shaw owns or has, Grow Financial is moving to his development down at the port. And as a result, their headquarters is being vacated. It's on Falkenburg Road, right between the Selman Expressway and I-4. And, and so the proposal on the table is to swap out that building and its 20-acre campus for the Ebor City headquarters of the sheriff's office now. Now, the one thing that's still outstanding is independent appraisals of both parcels. So you can really do an apples-to-apples comparison. But what our staff has told me is that they expect the values of the two to be close enough that some type of a deal might be workable. And it really is, from my point of view, and I think all of the commissioners more or less agreed with this, it's a tremendously attractive deal for the county. The sheriff's current headquarters is old and really very inefficient, besides from the, the sort of obvious fact that he's not even headquartered in the jurisdiction where he's responsible. He's actually headquartered in the middle of TPD's jurisdiction. So putting him out on Falkenburg Road, which is right near, of course, the main jail and right near the, the major arteries, it makes a whole lot of sense. It would put the Ebor City money back on the tax rolls, which could be a very attractive thing for the city of Tampa and for the CRAs, not to mention the broader region. And it also really secures the, the needs of the sheriff, probably for the next 80 or so years. And that is a really, really good investment on Hillsborough County's part in our future in, in making sure that he has the facilities that he needs. So a possibility for a real win-win, I think.
Right. And so where is that at in terms of negotiations?
So what we voted for was to allow a 30-day period where essentially anybody with a better idea can come forward.
Which I think some people think is fair.
Absolutely. That, that, you know, look, you've had an unsolicited proposal, so it's not like there was an RFP that people could respond to. This way, if, if someone has a better idea, they can come forward with it. And if not, the county then can move forward on seeing if we can come to a deal. There would be quite a few more hearings and votes before we would actually consummate the process. But one thing that makes it attractive, and I went through the building, it's, it's just an unbelievable facility.
This is the Falkenburg?
The Falkenburg Grow Financial, former headquarters. It, we, the move could be accomplished in three years. It, it, this is not, you know, a 10-year, multi-decade project.
And for the listeners, the Ebor building they're talking about is the sheriff's headquarters. You might not even notice it because you can't even use the parking lot anymore. It's over by Centennial Park. It's the last trolley, or the first trolley stop, depending on how you look at it. I guess it is stop number one. So there's a brick building back there that...
It's a transformative parcel for Ebor City.
Well, and also, for years, if not decades, some people have not wanted that office there, quite frankly. The, in the neighborhood, you know, there's, there's a taint of, of, you know, crime or what have you, fair or unfair, in Ebor City. And I know, I wrote a story for Creative Loafing like 15 years ago about the fact that people didn't like, like that newscasters would do live shots from outside the sheriff's office for an incident that happened like, you know, 25 miles away. But because, you know, the press conference is at in Ebor City. So it made it like, oh, this crime is happening in Ebor, when it wasn't. You know, Ebor's got its own issues by itself. You didn't, so some people did not like the fact that...
And they're not even responsible for that immediate area.
Right, there's a crime there, right.
But the other thing that Commissioner Myers brought up on Wednesday at our last meeting that is very exciting is perhaps the idea of a grocery store going in that area.
Oh, my God, that would be incredible.
Something that would really be needed.
I'm the former Ebor resident, and we don't, never had one there, and still don't.
And, and I think the idea is when you have this much land, you really can look at a lot of very creative ideas to bring in new amenities to the community.
We're speaking with Hillsborough County Commissioner Harry Cohen. I want to open the phone lines in a few minutes here, 813-239-9663. Harry will be with us here for a while. Okay, so a lot of big issues. Again, we said, you're not on the ballot, per se, but there are issues regarding Hillsborough County on the ballot. The biggest one, perhaps, being the half a cent sales tax, the community investment tax, or CIT. It's set to expire in a couple of years. So it certainly makes sense that you're being proactive in having this go before the voters this fall. This has generated over $2.3 billion over the decades since, what was it, 1990s, I guess? It was part of that Raymond James construction of the football stadium there for the Tampa Bay Buccaneers. Some controversy, though, Commissioner Cohen, about how much of this tax should go to the Hillsborough County School District. And some people say it's because, well, the district is holding their own referendum of one millage increase in property taxes. Of course, similar referendum narrowly lost in 2022. So have you, have you, so is now final, how much this is going to be break down when people vote on this? How much it will go to different areas?
Yes. Yes, that, that decision was made a few weeks ago. And it was, it was the subject of some controversy on the board. There was not agreement. If, if we were going to move forward, there was not agreement on whether anything should go to the schools off the top. As you, as you, I think, mentioned, the current CIT, 25% goes to the schools.
Okay, right now, 25%?
The schools essentially came to us and said, they explained what their capital needs were, and it equated to about 6.5% of, off the top in order to satisfy what they felt that they were going to need over the next 15-year period. There were some members of the board that wanted nothing. There were some that wanted to leave it the way that it is. And ultimately, we, we came to a compromise that, you know, probably nobody was thrilled with. But that's usually the best, quite frankly, deal, is when everybody walks away a little bit unhappy. And that was to have 5% go to, go to the schools. Not necessarily 100% of what they were asking for, but a big chunk of what they were asking for. And, and very important, because it's very, very important to recognize that for the capital needs of the schools to be met, this thing has, has got to pass.
Yeah, now, because now, their own referendum, are these different?
Their referendum is all about teacher salaries.
Right, this is capital you're talking about, buildings, construction, schools. Okay, so, so definitely different pools of money. And as we mentioned, the, the tax that the schools had, was, they did a similar tax a couple of years ago with their former head there that barely lost, but it did lose. And of course, 2022, you know, it was, I don't know if we want to equate, you know, partisanship to, in terms of supporting a local tax measure, but the fact was, it was a big year for Republicans. We know that. A lot of Democrats simply did not vote in 2022.
Well, I, I would just say that, first of all, in the transportation referendum in 2022, given, given the, the huge Republican margins and the governor's huge margin in Hillsborough County, it is amazing that it came as close as it did. And I would remind everybody that a judge interrupted the voting in the middle, and that for a couple of days, the voting was actually suspended on that. So it's, it's actually, there's a lot of evidence, given the way that it, and the margins by which it passed before, and how close it came in such a rough year, that there is still a tremendous public interest in money for transportation and transit and other types of improvements. Which gets you back to the CIT for a minute, because if you don't pass the CIT, which is a renewal of a tax that already exists, the problems that we all have with congestion, with, with just the explosive growth that the infrastructure has not caught up with, it's going to be much, much worse. The CIT is not a panacea. It is not a fix-all. But if we do not pass this, we won't even have the threshold of what we need to keep up with the basic infrastructure projects. And I'm talking the basic stuff. I'm talking the paving, the sidewalks, the intersections, you know, all of the things that are non-negotiable, so to speak.
You know, it is interesting with local governments, Pinellas has, they're a penny for Pinellas. Local governments, and some folks might say, you know, government, local governments, you know, they can't constrain their spending, what have you. It's defined that counties, and certainly schools are another whole issue, where, where counties have to do these extra taxes to, to basically do all the services or as many of the services, because I'm sure you want to do more, obviously, when it comes to something like transportation, but that you have to go to outside of what you're bringing from the regular funding that you get from the taxpayers.
I think there's no question about it. I mean, the bottom line is that the cost of delivering services, just like the cost of everything else in our society, is going up. And government is not immune from the same pressures that individuals feel. The, you know, I, I go to the grocery store a lot, and I pay very close attention to food prices. And I will tell you that, to me, that's the biggest issue out there.
Absolutely.
In, in...
Hitting everybody.
It's hitting everybody. And there is certainly no appetite on the part of the public, and we see this over and over again, for, you know, for additional property taxes particularly. And it's, it, it's very, very important that we convince people to keep this CIT piece going. Because in, in the absence of any new revenue, we've got to keep up at least, at least at a minimum with, with some of these infrastructure projects.
What, what type of advertising campaign, or how's this going to be promoted? Because you're going to need to, like, make sure people, you want people to vote for this thing.
Well, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, quite frankly. I'm hoping that the private sector is going to participate. But I will tell you that our county attorney and the other, the other lawyers for the public agencies in Florida tell us that under the current law, we, we can't use public dollars to directly advocate for this. So we are going to need private sector partners to join with us. And I think it's, it's in the interest of everybody. It's in the interest of, of not just the government and the schools, but it is in the interest of the business community. Because, you know, we have a fabulous airport, and I sit on the Aviation Authority. But you've got to be able to get people around once they get here. And right now, that is, is still our Achilles' heel. And this isn't going to solve it, but this is, this is the minimum that you have to do in order to keep up with, with some of this infrastructure work.
The, the urgency with which you're talking about this right now on the air is very reflective of the tone in the recent meeting where everybody was talking about. It seems like everybody is on board with continuing the CIT. But out in the community, and even on the dais in the chamber, how much opposition are you sensing? And do you feel like those opposed to the CIT have any kind of solution for what to do to make up for the loss in funding?
I was very gratified in the CIT discussion that we had at the county commission, that we had a bipartisan consensus on the need to go forward. Even the two commissioners who didn't vote for it on the original vote, Commissioner Hagan and Commissioner Myers, they, they didn't, it wasn't because they didn't concede that we needed the money. Commissioner Myers thought that more money should go to the schools. She has since expressed support for moving forward with the CIT. And I believe Commissioner Hagan thought it should go in 2026. But that, that being said, across the ideological spectrum, there was consensus about it. Commissioner Owen's departure does leave open the possibility of how his successor might feel. But based on the board, the way it was constituted, there was broad agreement that we absolutely have to do this.
And let me know if this question is too broad, Mitch, for where you want to go on this. Why can't we get to a place where more of that kind of decision-making or legislation that is a little bit more broad and all-encompassing, that people can agree on, why can't we get to a point?
Boy, that's a really, that's a really tough question.
Because sometimes when you watch county commission, you're like, wow.
Well, first of all, you know, 90% of our votes are unanimous. And to some degree, there, there is a lot of the nuts and bolts of government that takes place that does move forward that way. Part of the problem, I think, is when I was first elected in 2011, there were two daily newspapers, each of whom had a reporter sitting in the city council chamber. And every week, those reporters would write three or four stories apiece for papers that published every day. So people were very knowledgeable about issues of local government. It just, it was out there and people were, and I think that, that now, with the press so much more constrained than it used to be, and so much of, of the news sort of coming, there's so much national news that just drowns out everything local. I think that that makes it a lot harder for people to follow what's going on and, you know, sort of be, be engaged with it. But the truth is, the CIT was a great example of where people can come together. And I'll tell you another one, and, and I'm very, very proud of it. I am the chairman of the board of Tampa Bay Water. And Tampa Bay Water has Republicans and Democrats, Pasco County, Pinellas County, Hillsborough County, people with very, very broad ideological differences. That board comes together and makes the tough decisions on water for this community without rancor, without partisanship, and even these days, without a lot of parochialism, without people not recognizing that we're sort of all in this together. So I do think it happens. I think it unfortunately has not happened with transportation. And that, that is really the Achilles' heel. There have been so many efforts over the past few years, and they have all been stymied in one way or another. And we're really feeling the effect of it. We feel the effect of it in the congestion and in, you know, in so many of the other frustrations, I think, that people feel.
If you're just tuning in right now, you're listening to the skinny here on WMNF. Mitch Perry with Ray Rowe. We're talking to Hillsborough County Commissioner Harry Cohen. Commissioner Cohen, activists and just regular citizens have been coming to county commission meetings for months, urging that you oppose Tampa Electric's proposed rate increases, which are going to cost the average customer apparently more than $200 more next year. I'd like to get your thoughts about that. Of course, the Public Service Commission was in town last week. They held public, pulled hearings about both Tampa Electric and also Duke Energy's proposed rate hikes. Want to hear your thoughts about that. And also, Tampa, the city of Tampa has produced a climate action plan, but the county has not. Is there ever been any consideration about that?
So first of all, let me, let me talk about the electric rates. I'm very sympathetic to the issue, just like I was talking about food prices, the cost of people's utility bills, and it's not just electric, because it's, it's solid waste. It's, we've seen the proposals, both in the city of Tampa, and there, there have been rate increases in the county. It's, it's really everything that affects cost of living. Part of the reason that the county commission has not decided to really move, move forward aggressively on that issue is because it's not under our control, quite frankly. It's the Public Service Commission that sets the rates. And we did ask, and I asked specifically, the PSC to hold those local hearings. I, I wrote to them myself and asked them to do that at the urging of Food and Water Watch, because there was a need to hear from the public, and I'm really glad that that took place. In terms of a climate action plan, and in terms of doing more, in terms of this issue with the electrical bills, you know, part of serving on these boards, like the Board of County Commissioners, the Tampa City Council, where you have seven votes, is recognizing what that board is going to do and what it isn't going to do. And the board that, that, what, that I was on in the first two years, which had a different makeup than the board does now, was much more progressive on these types of issues.
Well, right, let's tell the listeners, I'm sorry, yeah, go, here, if you want to go on, finish, and then I'll...
Yeah, and, and so when these types of things would come up, you could get the votes to move forward on them. Right now, the votes aren't there.
And literally, because, of course, in 2022, we mentioned, you know, a big Republican year, which it was everywhere. And that trickle down to the local level, you had a four-to-three Democratic over Republican...
Five-to-two.
Five-to-two, excuse me. Excuse me. Five-to-two Democratic control over, five Democrats, two Republicans in the county commission. That flipped in 2022 to four Republicans, three Democrats.
And that, that has had some very real-life consequences, particularly as it relates to affordable housing and nonprofits and, and they're...
Affordable housing, tell me more about that. How's that affect?
Well, I think that, that probably that has been the single largest change in the board between the 2020 to 2022 board and, and the current board. And, and let me start out by saying that, look, reasonable people can disagree about what our priorities should be. Okay, I, I recognize that. But there's no question that there is a huge affordable housing crisis in our community. The cost of housing at every level, from the very rich to the very poor, has gone up. And so the, the pressures just sort of cascade down. And the view of the, the former board was to try to be very aggressive about that, to do what we could with whatever money we had available to build affordable housing units, to subsidize projects through impact fee abatements and tax incentives and density bonuses, different things that we could do. And we also put $10 million aside each year for affordable housing matches and projects and different things. $10 million out of a $9 billion budget. We have a lot of things that are not discretionary. I'm not saying we could take the whole $9 billion and do whatever we want with it. But that's really a very, very small amount of money, no matter how you, you look at it. And that, that was cut under the current board to $2 million a year, 10 to 2. And, you know, I, I think that, given the, the size of the problem, it's very important for the county to have skin in the game with trying to help solve it by continuing year after year to invest money in building some units.
And what's the, the argument from your GOP colleagues? That the private sector, something the private sector should be doing, developers, they don't need...
Well, I, I think that's been one of the arguments. The other argument has been that the infrastructure needs, the, the paving needs, the side, you know, the sidewalks supersede all that. But, you know, I don't like to put words in other people's mouths.
Yeah, no, I get it.
But I will tell you, but I will tell you that the conversations have been very disappointing. Because, you know, they, they lack, I think, compassion. And I think they also lack urgency in, in recognizing that this problem is only going to get worse. And the further and further, people have to live away from where their jobs are. And the longer the commutes get, and the more onerous it is for people to get to their place of employment because they can't afford to live near it, the more that we're going to continue to exacerbate income inequality and the more that the cost of housing is going to go up for everybody. Because if, if you have this pressure, it's going to continue to affect at every level of the market.
Again, if you're just tuning in, it's 11:30 AM here on 88.5 FM. We're talking to Hillsborough County Commissioner Harry Cohen. We'll be with him here. In a few minutes, we're going to talk to a state candidate for state representative. And, but continue on this conversation, and you can be part of this conversation. You can email us at dj@wmf.org, or call us at 813-610-7748. There have been, I don't know if this has come up, Commissioner Cohen, but I know this is a story I covered a couple of years ago, actually, actually when I was still at Bay News 9. But I know it's still ongoing. A group of citizens in the Keystone Odessa area have been challenging a large-scale housing development in their neighborhood that they don't feel has received adequate representation from the county commission because of this issue. It's Taylor Morrison is the developer, 200-acre, 194-home development. The residents believe they violate, Taylor Morrison violated the county's comprehensive plan allowing no more than one home per five acres on their property. The courts have ruled against their lawsuit, but they're still fighting this. Anything you can tell us about this?
I can't shed a whole, much more additional light on it. It is something that has been winding its way through the county attorney's office, and is the subject of a lot of litigation. But I, I know that, that it's really tied up in the courts at this point.
Wanted to ask you about that.
What about, let's go back to transportation, that Achilles' heel that you mentioned, Commissioner. I want to ask you about a recent vote at the Transportation Planning Organization, TPO. It was almost two weeks ago. The vote was eight to seven. You voted no. Generally, it was regarding widening I-275 from about Hillsborough Avenue to Bear's Avenue. It was supposed to be a pretty basic vote. I don't think anybody was expecting what happened. Were you expecting the motion from Commissioner Wollstill to modify the item that was previously dedicated to just those multimodal improvements and the addition of noise walls on that eight-mile stretch? Were you surprised by his motion to change it into a capacity issue?
Well, I wasn't surprised in the sense that I knew that this was something that he wanted to do. He had said that before. I was surprised at the timing of the motion, because it wasn't part of our agenda. And we had just, literally, five minutes earlier, decided to put off the consideration of certain amendments that the Citizens Advisory Committee asked us to take up.
Because you needed more information.
Because we needed more information. And in fairness, I thought they should both be treated, be treated the same way.
Yeah.
I also was on the TPO in 2016, when it took up TBX. So I knew that there would be a tremendous amount of public comment and interest in, in the item. You know, I will tell you that I voted no on it. I voted no on it on the procedural ground. I felt that it should be talked about in a month or two months, when everyone had had sufficient notice. But, but I am extremely skeptical about it on the merits as well. And that is because, number one, this isn't about the interchange. This is not about malfunction junction and the transfer of traffic between I-4 and 275 and, and the multiple arteries. This is much further up. This is Hillsborough to Bear's Avenue. And the last time I drove on it, which was like yesterday, the, the shoulders are enormous. The shoulders on the interior are more than adequate to accommodate an additional traffic lane.
To run a train through the center.
So before, I think you can even have a discussion. I think that you have to ask yourself the question, why on earth would we spend the money to do that type of a project if the right-of-way already exists inside, inside the already paved road? I also recall making the argument at the time that I supported the interchange improvements, that it, that the damage that would be done to the urban core by a widening in that particular corridor has to be weighed against the need to do it.
Right.
And I don't think there's been anywhere near...
Which historically, we know about.
Even a discussion about that. So I, I mean, I just was a definite no on that.
Were you on the TPO board in 2021? Can you remember?
I was.
Do you remember why these discussions of funding just noise walls and safety improvements from Hillsborough to Bear's kind of fizzled in that one, in that?
So if I, you know, there have been a lot of noise walls discussions over the years, and, and I don't want to confuse them, but it seems to me that, it seems to me we pushed as hard as we could for noise walls. And that, you know, there were different DOT criteria that they were able to use to get them in certain places, and in others, they weren't. And, and oftentimes, they would tie it to whether or not there was a widening going on. But I can't tell you I remember exactly what happened with those noise walls.
And maybe my last transportation question, is it, is it too much to ask you to say what transportation projects you think will be funded in the next five years?
So I'm really hopeful that... So I'm really hopeful that, I just had a meeting with Brightline about a week ago. And what I have always said, I said this when I ran for mayor, I said it when I was on city council, I really always thought we'd be much, much further along on this road than we are now. But I always have felt that once you have something to build off of, you can start, once you have a wheel, you can start adding spokes. And the big frustration with Governor Scott's veto of high speed rail in 2010 was that that could have been the catalyst. That station in Ebor City could have been the catalyst to something to the airport, to something to USF, to something to go across the Howard Franklin Bridge. And what I'm hoping with Brightline is that if that ends up coming to fruition, which I think it will, I just think it's a question of when and how quickly, then what can spur off of that? Can you somehow intersect that with the expanded streetcar and turn that into the beginning of a network? And then can the airport extend out to 275 to that piece where the Charlie Steakhouse is that could be a multimodal transportation center?
The old Charlie's.
Yeah, the old one, you know, then to launch over the Howard Franklin Bridge, and then that could connect to the Brightline station. And all of a sudden, then you're starting to see the makings of a network. I think that that's the hope. And at least with the streetcar and with Brightline, there is some movement going on. And I think that that would start leading us in the right direction.
Again, that's the voice of Hillsborough County Commissioner Harry Cohen, speaking with us here on the skinny. Commissioner Cohen, if you could stay with us for just a moment, we're going to take a call, or actually on Zoom right now, is Nathan Kipers, and we want to talk to Nathan. Nathan is running for State House District, House District 65. The reason we're bringing him on, of course, is that last week we had on Ashley Brundage. Ashley Brundage, of course, is trying to make history, become the first transgender person to win in the state legislature, but little equal time here. Nathan Kipers, are you on the line with us here?
Yes, I am. Thank you so much for having me today.
Hey, Nathan, thanks for coming on. We were trying to get you on last week when we had Ashley on. And again, we appreciate you coming on for a few minutes right now. So again, as we mentioned a moment ago, we had on Ashley on last week talking about her candidacy for House District 65, which is mostly South Tampa, right? There's a little bit of Northwest Hillsborough, or yeah, Northwest Hillsborough.
Yeah, yeah, we've got a northwestern arm. It goes south of the airport and runs along the coast there on the bay.
So can you tell our listeners a little bit more about yourself, though? What's your background here before you make your, this is your first time running for office, is that correct?
Yes, so this is my first time running for office, but it's not my first time being involved in the political world. It's not even my first time on a Florida state legislative campaign. So I originally came to Tampa on scholarship to the University of Tampa for music education at the age of 17, and I'm a UT brat who never left. After I got here, I decided that this is my home, and it's where I'm going to build my life. And my first political work in 2008 was when I served as an out of state intern for Hillary Clinton's presidential campaign. I actually was lucky enough just to uncover some photos of herself and I from that experience. Funny enough, I ended up working in places like Indiana and South Dakota, which, you know, in 2016, I remember reading news articles saying they weren't even comfortable sending people out there. And so for me, you know, I feel like, well, if I could survive that kind of radioactive environment, then here in a swing district in Florida, I hope I have a lot to offer. So in my political career, in 2012, I worked with a state house campaign that was ran in South Brandon. I was on a staffer Gail Gottlieb's state house campaign there. And then in 2016 and 2020, I worked outside of the Democratic Party as a voter registration coordinator for nonprofit organizations. And what was great about that was that it really gave me a detailed understanding of the political geography of our city. And combining that with my education background, I like to think I learned a thing or two about getting crowds excited about what we're doing in environments and music education. Combining that with my field experience and my political experience, I felt like we could make a real difference in this race. Because as many Democrats know, in 2020 and 2022, we had some pretty frustrating elections as Democrats. And I believe a huge part of that is related to how our field operations worked during the COVID era. So now that we're transitioning out of the COVID era, I wanted to come home to the Democratic Party and bring the skills that I've picked up over these years and flip what is one of the only competitive house districts that we have in the state.
Okay, well, that's the question, whether how competitive that actually is. As we'd mentioned, again, we're speaking with Nathan Kipers right now. We'll be back with Harry Cohen in just a few minutes here. Nathan Kipers is running in the House District 65 seat, which is controlled right now by Republican Karen Gonzalez Pittman. And I believe, the last I looked, which is in February, the last, the state division of elections website statistics show that there's roughly 50,000 more Republicans than Democrats in the district. So that's a formidable challenge for you to make. I get it that 2022 and 2020, Democrats were hampered with their field efforts, as you mentioned, with COVID and have you. 2022, of course, was a total blowout up and down the state when it came to the Republicans versus Democrats. So if you are the nominee, if you are successful on August 20th, how do you combat that voter disadvantage registration wise?
It's a valid question, and it's something that we're talking about on a state level very, very actively. You know, I was at Leadership Blue, and this registration gap that we see in formerly registered Democrats in Florida is setting off a lot of alarm bells. For me, and I believe Ms. Brundage also referred to this, those non-party affiliated voters actually lean Democrat a lot heavier than, you know, we generally expect. I believe the latest surveys I've seen have said that our non-party voters are going Democrat at about a three to one scale, right? Like, it's about a 75% when it comes to voting day, they actually are voting Democrat. And when it comes to those 2024 registration numbers, I was also comparing the numbers from 2018. At that time, this district was known as District 65. And actually, instead of having that northwestern arm we mentioned earlier, the district previously had an arm going on the southeast side of the bay, which actually involved a much more conservative population. And that election in 2018, Deborah Valenti managed to keep the Republican under two percentage points. So I am fully confident that with these new borders, we can do even better than we did in 2018, and I think it's an exciting opportunity.
And Nathan, what are the main issues that you're running on?
So the primary issues I'm running on, I talk about this very often, we have a problem in our state legislature with just punching down on vulnerable populations, right? That takes a lot, lot, lot of different shape. We have essentially a lot of legislators who are committed to going onto Fox News and getting their poll numbers up that way by punching down on different groups. I think the first thing that we need to do is end that in our state government. The second thing is addressing the economic crunch of our working class, right? We've heard, actually, I've really appreciated the conversation on the increasing cost of housing, of food, and just the basic living expenses here inside District 65. It's even getting to the point where, you know, providing housing to the workers that we need in this economy is becoming challenging. So we need to address that cost of living spiral, that economic crunch. And then the third thing for me is education, because that economic crunch is actually tied to education in my mind. Education is our social mobility vehicle. It's what enables people to move between classes in this country. And we've seen an assault on education from the state. So those are the three things that I'm talking about with voters most often.
All right, we're going to leave it there. Nathan Kipers, Democrat, running for the House District 65 receipt in Tampa, Hillsborough County. The election, of course, is the Democratic primaries on August 20th. Nathan's running against Ashley Brundage. Nathan, thanks so much for joining us on the skinny this afternoon, this morning.
Thank you for having me today. It was my pleasure.
Great. And, you know, we mentioned a moment, beginning the show, actually, we're going to talk about some of the bills that Governor DeSantis has not signed yet. We want to give a promotion to Art in Your Ear in a few minutes because Joel and Shilky will be talking with a reporter, and also Margaret Murray, my old friend, Margaret Murray, Executive Director, Creative Pinellas, about DeSantis's vetoing of arts and cultural funding. You know, he really whacked that pretty significantly.
Did it in Tampa, too.
Yeah, the budget, they signed it last week in downtown Tampa. Harry, yeah, did, how did the Hillsborough County come out in the budget last week? Have you looked at that much?
So far, no, so far, for our stuff, so far, we've done okay. But we didn't have all that much in there that we were following. I was hoping, though, to just tag on to what our candidate was talking about, because I think that if there was a lesson from the 2022 election, it was that these lower ballot races really do go the way of the marquee race on the, at the top of the ticket. And, you know, we have a tremendous amount on the ballot locally here in November, some in August, but mostly in November. All of our constitutional officers, we have a very highly contested race for the county commission, for the state attorney, for the clerk, for really important positions in the community as supervisor of elections. And I think that in the past, where you could rely on this individual strengths and weaknesses of the candidates and the campaigns that they run to prevail, what we've seen in recent years is that the sweep of the national election, whether it be a presidential election or a gubernatorial election, has huge consequences down the ballot. And I think that that's a very, very important thing. I was listening to that, to one of the, you know, that our candidate just talking, and, you know, he's very much, I think, at the mercy of those winds that are blowing, particularly between Biden and Trump in Hillsborough County. You have a ton of countywide races, that presidential race, how much those candidates can withstand, that the other party's presidential candidate gets, that's, I think, going to be the story of this election and who's going to win or lose.
We've got a call here, so let's go, our callers, and we'll pick up on that. We just talked about there. Hi, Jeff, you're on the skinny here on WMF.
Hi, I just wanted to comment that the gentleman that's on now is very informative, and he seems like he knows what he's talking about. But he's a typical Democrat. He has stated that the uncommitted voters will vote three to one.
Oh, you mean you're talking about Nathan, who was on a few minutes ago?
Yes, Nathan, who was on a few minutes ago. Yeah. He was saying that the noncommitted voters would vote three to one, and then in the same sentence later on, he said 75% of them then would vote Democratic. And this is something the Democrats seem to do a lot as they stretch things out of proportion.
Well, yeah, that's a hope, right? That, we don't know how the NPAs are going to vote, and they certainly haven't been voting Democrat in the last couple of elections.
I would assume that they'll split right down the middle, like the Republicans and Democrats. And.
I don't know, though. You know, the thing, Harry, is that, is that, you know, Ron DeSantis actually said this the other day, actually, oh, it's our caller. DeSantis said this the other day, was it yesterday or was it last week? Anyway, that when he was elected in 2018, there was 300,000 more Democrats and Republicans registered in the state. And now it's over 900,000 Republicans. So that's a switch of 1.2 million voters, literally. And he says he's never familiar with that's ever happened in any state. And I don't know either, not that, you know, it's something that you look at, but in terms of such a short period of time, where you've seen a state that was, for 20 years, roughly a quote unquote swing state, a purple state, even Harry Cohen, when it had a very large, going back to the Barack Obama era, of 700,000, 800,000 Democrats, you know, Rick Scott was beating Alex Sinken, was beating Charlie Crist by one point, when Democrats had this huge lead. So those NPAs, which, you know, now are roughly 28, 29% of the electorate, they, I don't, they were kind of probably more voting more Republican, you break it down like that. And so I don't know now, I mean, that is a salvation for Democrats. And you've talked about this when I saw you at the Joe Biden event a few months ago, you have a lot of great hopes for Democrats, hopes anyway, for Amendments Three and Four, the cannabis and abortion rights amendments, that will help out the ticket.
Well, I have more hope for the marijuana amendment than I do for the abortion amendment as a turnout issue.
Okay.
I think that, for the most part, the people that care deeply about the abortion issue are voting. I think those people are already voting.
Yeah.
The marijuana issue, though, I think brings out new voters. And I think it brings out old voters and young voters, white voters and black voters. And I think it is an equal opportunity attraction.
Well, as our friend Jake Hoffman, you were at the event last week, right? And Jake Hoffman, Republican, said, hey, Republicans smoke weed, too.
I think it, I think it, it's not all going to go to the Democrats. It's definitely not all going to go to the Democrats. But my guess is that it will be more helpful to the left than it will be to the right in terms of any kind of net effect. And, you know, the one thing I will tell you about the marijuana issue, I was actually, I was the city council member a decade ago that did the first decriminalization inside the city of Tampa back before anybody was ever even talking about this. And one of the issues then, and one of the issues now, aside from the fairness issues and the criminal justice issues, is the fact that this money is slipping away into the black market economy. And the state and the local governments are getting no benefits from it in terms of taxation, as they are in other states that have legalized it. And that is money that we are literally leaving on the table. That is number one. And number two, in a world where we are so concerned about fentanyl and some of these other really hard drugs that are making it in and being laced with other things, it is much, much better from a public health point of view if there is something available legally that the quality can be inspected and attested to.
That is something, that's something the Amendment Three people are really pushing on, that it's regulated, that it's clean, that it's, you know, basically, you're getting a safe product. They're really emphasizing, it's called smart and safe, is the campaign. Hey, want to ask you, make sure, get this in before we go here, we've got about nine minutes left here in the program. The commission voted last month, six to one, to allow for investing county surplus funds in rated or unrated bonds, notes, or instruments backed by the full faith and credit of the government of Israel, which I know you had a lot of folks talking about that when this came up. Talk to me about your thoughts about this and how the commission went this way.
Well, you know, the vote, even though it largely, the public comment was about other issues, the vote was really just about whether or not to allow our independent investment committee to consider Israel bonds as an investment, which the state of Florida has been doing for years and other counties have done. And I think that the commission voted its view, and that was, that was that. I mean, you know, it, obviously, there are a lot of other issues swirling around, the Middle East conflict. But, but the county commission is really, just like it's really not the place for electric rates, it's also really not the place for foreign policy, or for, quite frankly, a lot of the things that sometimes come up.
But they do come up. It happened with Tampa, City Council, Cuba, issues like that. Let me ask you this, not to get into the whole Israel Hamas thing, we don't, we want to go there, but I will ask you this, as a Jewish man and a prominent Jewish person in the community, you know, obviously, been a lot of antisemitism in the country, certain cities. I don't know how much we've seen here in Florida, and maybe you can talk about that. But just if you could talk about this America and what we're dealing with this issue, which has always been around, but really has kind of really blown up in the last year or so.
Oh, I think that there's no question that it's blown up considerably across the country, particularly on certain college campuses. I will tell you that I think locally, things have been less incendiary than they have been nationally. I can't tell you that I loved the public, a lot of the public comment at the hearing on the bonds. And I don't want to get into a tit for tat about some of what was said. But I, but I will say that for the most part, I think that things in the Tampa area and Hillsborough County have been more under control than they've been in the rest of the country. There is a real concern about the rise in antisemitism. And antisemitism can often be the canary in the coal mine for a lot of other types of hatreds to rear their heads. It may be first this, but it will soon after be that. And I think it's very, very important, particularly where people have profound disagreements, that, you know, they, that they be careful what they say. And that words have meaning. And, you know, it's important that we try to navigate what are clearly very, very difficult times. And, you know, I.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I get that. Only a few minutes left to go. I did want to talk about some of the state bills, but before that, you know, they mentioned on the Down and Dirty. Harry, you did run for mayor in 2019. It's very far away. We're three years away from another election. But you, is it something you think about once in a while about possibly running again for mayor of Tampa?
Not really. You know, it's, first of all, I'm in a little different position than the other people that are being mentioned as possible candidates, because my term on the county commission is up in 2026. And if I were to run for reelection and win and resign to do something else.
Yeah.
The governor would appoint my successor.
So right, so you would have to think it before, you know, 20, early, you know, early 2026, what you're going to do, your future is going to be.
I would, that's right. So I think that the question for me is not whether or not I'm going to run for mayor, it's whether or not I'm going to run for reelection to the county commission in 2026. And while I haven't made that decision definitively yet, and I probably won't until after the 2024 election, the short answer to the question is that's what I expect to do.
On that note.
I expect to do that.
How, how much anxiety do you get over some of these supervisor of elections races? Just the fact that, you know, our local supervisor of elections do have these challengers from, you know, alleged election watchdog groups, and I'm just going to say some of them, you know, election deniers and things like that. Does it give you much anxiety to see our local elections come under this kind of pressure?
Tremendous anxiety. It is absolutely, in my view, right up there with the most important, with the election for president of the United States, is the level of importance. for president of the United States is the level of importance. In 2008, Buddy Johnson was the supervisor of elections.
Oh, my God, that's a name from the past.
And, and at that time I was working at the clerk's office and he took his finance, the financial operations of the supervisor out of the clerk's office and took them in house. And that was sort of the red flag that things were going awry there. And at that time, Phyllis Fuzansky ran and unseated him for supervisor of elections. But I was convinced at the time that if we had not captured that office, that it, it would have fallen into the hands of the types of people that we have seen in this country who don't seem to be committed to fair elections. And I think that it is very, very important. We have an excellent supervisor of elections. He is Sterling Award winning, which means that it's the governor's Sterling Award that he's won. He does an excellent job. There's never been a question about the, the integrity of the elections. And, you know, I, I just think that it's very, very important that we return Craig Latimer to office. That, that to me is right up there with the most important things that are going to happen this fall.
We did, we had just a couple of minutes left and I did say this at the top of the show, so I want to mention before we go here, the governor, Governor DeSantis, now I'm switching over now from Hillsborough County to the state election news, but Governor DeSantis has basically a week to sign or veto a number of bills, as we mentioned at the top of the show. He apparently, I mean, we know he signed, we haven't seen a press release from the governor, the Dozier School Boy, School for Boys compensation bill, 20 million, a huge development there. But a couple of other bills, I'm very curious about this. One of them is HB 321, which is releasing balloons. This is Rep. Linda Cheney out of Pinellas County. It's a nice environmental bill. It basically would ban, you know, releasing balloons in the atmosphere. And why is because this thing is really bad for the environment, actually. And it's, and it's, I'm just curious, the governor has not signed this yet. I do think that tonight, we might see some announcements at six o'clock. We did a couple of weeks ago with the hemp bill. The Jimmy Buffett Memorial Highway, okay, that's basically renaming, let's see, parts of State Road A1A is the Jimmy Buffett Memorial Highway, which is interesting is that he, he was down in Monroe County, the governor was the other day, and he didn't sign it there. So I don't know what that means. And also, as we've mentioned on the show, the vacation rental bill, this is a huge bill that a lot of folks in Pinellas County are really interested in, well, throughout the state, or in fact, some legislators say it's the, it's the most important bill that they get the most calls and emails about. That's the Nick De Segley bill, the governor. We don't know where he's going to weigh in on this. There's a lot of pressure for him to veto that. Also, an ethics investigation bill. This is a bill that, Harry Cohen, you'd be interested in this and the fact that basically, you know, right now, if we read an article in the Tampa Bay Times, this is like somebody just did something horrible in state or any office, you know, you could, or any of us can basically go to make an ethics complaint by, because we read about it. This bill would just change that and said that you have to have direct, that's hearsay, the bill says now, you have to have direct evidence to make an ethics charge now, which would really eliminate many of them that we get right now. That is in front of the governor right now, so we're at the wait and see about that. Is there any others that I wrote down here? I think those are the main ones. But I do think, again, as we go into the last week, Ray, you know, we're going to see because the hemp bill that we've talked a lot about on the show the, the last year, he did veto that, which is a win for the hemp entrepreneurs, but he did it at 6:30 at night, you know, like you didn't want any news about that. So some of these big bills, we may get like.
I mean, yeah, look, he signed in clandestine a bill for reparations for the Dozier Boys just a few hours ago.
I am really shocked that there was no big, we talked, because Ben, who are colleagues out here, who wrote all those great articles about that a decade ago, Ben would thought there was going to be a big event, drive up to it to cover it, write about it.
Yeah.
And they did it without letting anybody know about it.
That's it?
Yeah. So we did mention Joel and Shilky, want to say again that Joel Ellen is going to talk about Governor DeSantis's budget, he's going to talk about the vetoes of the arts community, and that is going to be coming up here.
Yeah, Hillsborough County Commissioner Harry Cohen, thank you so much for joining us. I didn't get to ask you your favorite song from the Barbra'sville, but.
I'll tell you the next time.
Okay, maybe we'll get it on the next time. Thank you so much for listening to WMNF Tampa on behalf of myself, Ray Roa. My co-host Mitch Perry, Skip Sassy on the boards and Irene on the phones. Thanks for tuning in and have a really great weekend. Put on your sunscreen.